She is film director and writer. She has directed documentaries, art and short films with the support of the National Film Fund from Denmark, Danish Television and Al Jazeera. Her films have competed at the Berlinale, Hot Dogs, Copenhagen Dogs and many other international film festivals. Her first feature hybrid documentary, Elsewhere, premiered at Copenhagen Dogs this year. And her first VR work, Hush, which I'm going to talk today about, premiered at Venice Film Festival last year. So from filmmaking to immersive VR, how the desire to let sensuality and physical impact took her from the linear elsewhere hybrid documentary to vertical immersive storytelling. What are the unique aspects of immersive storytelling that makes it possible to use it as a tool to connect with nature and myth in a different way? Sounds a bit mystical, but that's why we have Rebecca with us. Hello, good morning. And she's going to talk-
Sorry. Good morning.
Hi.
Hi.
So we're sharing the screen and the screen is yours. So please, I shortly present it to yourself, so start wherever you feel like it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, good morning, everybody. Oh, good afternoon. I'm not sure where you're exactly what time zone, the different places, but yes. I am a filmmaker fundamentally and not an immersive VR storyteller. So for me, Hush was the very first VR project I did. And I was actually kind of... The reason that I decided that it might be interesting to go that way was that, like it was said, I was working on a documentary film called Elsewhere. It's a hybrid. So it's partly fiction, partly documentary. And Elsewhere is about the invisible aspects of human life and storytelling. So it's about mythology, religion, and very much mythology is connected to nature. So creatures of nature, merpeople, elver people and things like that. And Elsewhere was shot in the north of Denmark, in a particular area of Denmark where nature is much more rough than in the rest of the country. Denmark is very flat, very undramatic nature-wise, but in this particular area of Denmark, close to the Western Sea, people have through generations been very dependent on the sea as a source of income, as their livelihood. And it's much more windy there, it's rougher. There are areas that are sort of desert-like. And in this particular area of Denmark, Christianity has always been strong as well. Both Christianity, but also other types of faith, or you can call it superstition. I never really liked the word superstition because it kind of sounds as if it's a different degree of faith or belief. In my optic, everything that we believe in, experience, is real somehow. One way or the other, it is part of reality. Whether it's something we can see or not, or if it's something that everybody believes in or only some people, but it's part of our world. And so I was interested in this connection between faith, belief and nature, and the relationship between human beings and nature. And that somehow it seems as if if you're in an area where you have where nature is much more present, where you are at the mercy of nature much more than you are if you live in a city, maybe there's also a tendency to having stronger belief systems because there's this kind of humility when it comes to your relationship to nature. So which makes it somehow easier to believe that there's something else out there, something bigger and stronger than us, us human beings, our rationality, our mind, our will. Because you live in a world where we didn't kind of... You live in a reality where nature is somehow still stronger than you. So this is all what drove me to investigate this part of Denmark. And what I found was that nobody believes in nature creatures anymore, but there's still like little leftovers from these old beliefs. And there are a lot of ghosts in this area, as well as a strong sense of Christianity. So I started to dive into these different myths. And one of the myths that I was dealing with is the one that became the foundation for Hush. And that is the myth about the young man who walks by this shore and hears the calling from the merpeople. And that eventually makes him give up life on land amongst the humans. And he's sort of taken by this other world. And I'm going to show you a clip now from the film which deals cinematically with this myth. And then I'm going to talk to you afterwards about how I was trying to communicate through the senses and not so much through rationality. And try and tell the story in a way that makes the viewer not think about, is this true or not, does this make sense or not, but more just feel it with the senses. Yeah, so you can show that first clip now.
Yes, Angela, and before you commented the videos, would you mind sharing how you started thinking about that? Did you know from the very beginning that it's going to be a XAR piece and you're going to produce it for VR headsets? Or like how we came to that? You mentioned-
No, no. Yeah, no, I was just talking... Yeah, so it all started with I was working on the film. And then because it was so important to me to mainly communicate through the senses, through the tactile, physical experience of watching a film, I had a conversation with somebody from the Danish Film Institute who actually told me, but if you want to go completely with the tactile, physical experience, then immersive might be worth exploring as a part of a corner of your film, of the world that the film represents. And so with... And then I chose this particular myth from the film and decided I'm going to go into this one. Then I'm actually going to... Because, and it's even in the name, as a viewer of a film, you are an observer. You view what is in front of you. You don't make any choices yourself. You're not involved in the narrative. Your way of positioning yourself in the cinema doesn't affect what happens on the screen. And because I wanted people to tune into a different frequency, I want them to open up a space in themselves where the possibility of feeling this otherness in nature or that it all of a sudden feels kind of likely that there might be something out there to really themselves experience this feeling of some otherness, something... A living entity with some sort of intentionality. In order for people to experience that themselves on their own body, I wanted them to not be in that comfortable observer zone because that's kind of a place of judging, of engaging or not engaging. But in immersive filmmaking, you are like it is... Like it's also in the word, you are a user, not a viewer. So you are a participant somehow. And I wanted the audience to not be an audience anymore, but to be a participant and to be somebody who is somehow an accomplished in the story. And so I decided to make the use of the subject to make the use of the subject of the mythology. So that rather than hearing a story about a young man who went to sea, you yourself is put in that position. You are the one who is at the sea. You are the one who gradually experiences how the sounds of the sea change gradually and it starts to feel like a song or a voice that is calling out to you. So that is how I decided to try and tell this story in VR. Yeah. And so, but then of course I had no experience. I had no previous experience with doing VR. So I had to learn a lot in order to figure out how to then go about it. I knew that there were certain elements that I also used in the film that I wanted to use in VR. And that is playing with your senses. So I wanted to work with sound hallucination. I wanted to work with real sounds that are gradually distorted a little bit. I wanted to work with a reality that looks real, but is not... But is slightly distorted. And then, so I wanted to create a strange but realistic world. And the first thing we did when we tested how to do... How to create our world and how to make it look like was that we tried with real footage. But that gave us a lot of different problems because I'm sure it has improved already now, but at that time, real footage was... Didn't look amazing. So we decided to go completely CGI with everything, but our outset was a realistic world, but a world where we... But a world that is slightly distorted. So when we started the financing process, we made a little pilot. And I could see from the beginning because I wanted so much tactility. I wanted... I didn't want it to look like a computer world. I didn't want that cleanliness that you often see in a computer-generated world. I wanted dust. I wanted the feeling of dust in the air. I wanted all these different things. And I found out very quickly that that pushes the software quite a lot when you do VR. And so one of the things that we worked with was obscurity. It's pretty dark and in the outset it was even darker than it was before. And now I will show you the first little test that we did that we used when we were traveling around pitching, a very rough test of the underwater world. And now is actually when you show clip one. Thank you. Okay. Hi. All right. So yeah, so that was the way it looked from the very beginning. And as you can see, we still didn't really figure out exactly what it was supposed to look like or how to use sounds exactly. Because here you actually still have a real woman's voice speaking. And you have... Yeah, and you have all these water elements and stuff. It's not... It's pretty rough still. And of course, one of the main things that we had to deal with when we made this piece was how to get from the realistic world to the more imaginary underwater world. How to get from the beach and into the water. And from the beginning, we had this idea that we were going to place the user on the beach, that there might be seamen or as other sailors around you to give you this feeling that you were a ghost yourself. And maybe you would go by boat out to the sea and then kind of fall into the water. And all of this, we realized quite quickly, this was too complicated. And so... Yeah, so and then we had this idea, actually it was my producer's idea, to that maybe we could just have it rain instead and then have the world rain away. And of course, that was a huge relief because one of the things that can really go wrong in VR is if you have too much moving around. If you have to... There's this thing that people can get dizzy. And also, since we'd never done VR before, I like the idea that you can put the user in one place and that's actually where they stay. And then the world around them changes and it becomes kind of a falling, a vertical fall where you are placed rather than... Rather than a lot of action that happens after each other. And another thing that's important about it is that this is a subjective experience. And that is extremely important in creating this illusion that you have this unique encounter with nature. So what I like about VR in creating this kind of unique subjective experience is that you can isolate somebody completely. So they don't... They're not affected by the feelings and reactions of anybody else around them. You... And they are also in this space where they are completely locked inside your reality, but at the same time, you can make use of this slight doubt that there might be some sort of interference from the outside real world through sounds particularly. And so this creates a good basis for playing with hallucination, for playing with this feeling of, was that actually something I heard? Was it part of the design or was it something that I imagined? And this is how we have these actual experiences in nature when we are in a dark forest alone, standing there listening. At some point, you are bound to have the feeling that there is something out there and what is coming from my own imagination and what is actually here? And I wanted to create that feeling within the user. And in that sense, VR is quite ideal because you are alone with your experience. You affect your own experience. You move around. You decide what to focus on. You decide where to look. So for that reason, manipulation of real sounds into little whispers, little breathing sounds, hushes, it's also called hush, mixed with real sounds of water and things like that were incredibly important when trying to create this illusion of you having a meeting with an otherness in nature. So those are some of the things that we decided to work with. And then of course also visually, obscurity is extremely important. So a bit of obscurity, darkness, shadows, all of these devices are quite useful, of course, when wanting to create this kind of illusion that there might be, might not be something out there. And so I'm going to show you a clip now from... And it's a 2D version, of course, so that is a bit of a shame. But that's the only way we can show it on a flat screen, of course. I hope you get to see the real piece as it should be seen. But here is how we solved this transition from being on the beach and to being kind of called into the water. So if you play clip number... Now I just have to make completely sure that it is actually clip number three. All right. So that feels a bit slow when it's on 2D, but... Yeah, but we found that that is a good way to get from the beach and to the underwater world because it uses rain that gradually blurs out your world. For me at least, that kind of works in that whole direction of not judging, of not becoming too aware of what you think about this. And I think if you went on a boat and you sailed out and you kind of had to go through something that seems a bit like a drowning, this leaves you open to much more interpretation about what it is that actually happens to you. If you are just taken over by the underwater world or if you are somehow yourself a part of going there, if you are drowning, if you are just entering a different type of world. And I'm happy that all of this is a bit open-ended. At the end, I want to say that another thing- At the end, I want to say that another thing that is actually important, but not always possible, of course, when watching this piece is that ideally you experience it in an installation. Because it's a very sort of quiet, meditative kind of work. And it's not ideal that you go from a lot of action and then directly into this VR piece. So when we've had it as an installation, we've done it in a way that it prepares you for this kind of calm entrance into another kind of world. So we use elements from the sea, from the world of fishing, where this myth is derived from. And we created sort of transparent walls of projections from the ocean. And what we've done is that we've done recordings from above the sea. And then, and so the beginning of the projection is, is this, is the, is the projection of the sea on a screen. So it looks like a surface, like a transparent surface of water running down. And so, and another thing that I put a lot of importance on with the various installations, when, when the piece is part of an installation, is that you protect the viewer. Because I never really appreciated when I do VR that everybody can look at me while I am in a, in a completely sort of, in my own experience. It, I want to protect the user so that they are not vulnerable to outside gazes. So part of the installation is to protect the viewer from gazes from outside. So it's always wall by wall by wall. And then at the very back, the user is there alone. So that you can move your arms around, be frightened, cry, whatever happens to you. You don't have to worry about that you are, that you are kind of the object of other people's gaze. So you can show the final clip. And that is from the installation at Nikolai Kunstel in Copenhagen.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any last comments from your side?
No, except that I, I realized that I think I forgot to tell everybody what the actual myth that is the outset of the work is. But-
But you can do it shortly right now?
Yeah, no, but it's, so it's all about, it's connected to nature and of course, the merpeople in nature. But it is this story, but that is also told in the clip that I showed from the film. It is the story about a young man who goes to sea looking for driftwood. And then gradually he just fades away. And everybody knows that he was taken by the merpeople because he was seduced by their song. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Super lovely. So I just want to address the ones who are watching here from Latvia, Riga, that Hush is available to see. So all this talk was about, you can come to Riga International Film Festival, to their main venue, Splendid Palace on Elisabetta Street. And from six o'clock today and tomorrow, get this experience yourself. Because it's available together with two other case studies you're going to hear about today. So thank you, Rebecca, very much. It was a pleasure listening for you. As, let's, let me entitle you, a previous typical traditional director, experiencing this VR, staying so open. Okay, we can't do that, but what we can do. So I'm happy you had your supportive team, someone who helped you and not have scared you with VR and possibilities and that you haven't been disappointed with that particular possibilities. So it was very interesting to hear. We also received some feedback from our listeners that confusing brain is sometimes good. Thank you, Eric, for staying with us. And yeah, so if there is no more from your side, we thanking you again for joining us this morning.
You're welcome.
I really hope that our local directors also get the openness you share with us regarding Exar. And-
Yeah. Put your avation, Tim. Yeah.
Lovely, lovely to have you here.
All right. Thank you. Enjoy the festival.
We are.